Okay, I will call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum with four of the five members present. And are there any adjustments to tonight's agenda? Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with flexibility? Okay, this time we will start with introduction of guests and we'll start over here with Ms. Bailey and we'll just swing around. Okay, welcome everybody. We're glad to have you here. Hey, at this time I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent. I think she has some special recognitions tonight.
Good evening. I do have several guests in the house tonight with me. The first person I would like to recognize is Carla Campos. I want to take a moment to thank our English language academic coach Carla Campos for her exceptional service and quiet strength. She is one of those remarkable people who will work tirelessly behind the scenes, driven by passion and care and a deep commitment to our students, their families and teachers. Her own story of overcoming and succeeding inspires all who know her. In addition to her regular duties, Carla has stepped in selflessly to substitute in our bilingual cell classroom while that teacher undergoes chemo, showing true compassion and dedication. She works closely with teachers, providing guidance, encouragement and strategies that help them better serve our English learners. She is a champion for engaging parents, building bridges and creating opportunities for success at every level. Her hard work, her humility and heart make a lasting difference in our district. And we are deeply grateful for all that she does. Thank you Carla for displaying our Portrait of a Wildcat attributes daily and for being you. Come on up here. And then here, as a pen for making a difference, that's for supporting.
Thank you so much.
And the board would like to shake your hand.
Next, we have some winners in the house that are just amazing little scientists. And so we're so excited to have our guests here tonight. So I would like for Jude Brulhart, Cassid Castillon and Caleb Lackey and Calvin Brulhart come up to the front and show off those trophies.
Did I miss Q? No.
Yes, so.
Jude knows what's going on.
Yes, so Jude is our K through three champion and his science fair project was on air quality. Was that right? Do you want to say a little bit about it? Okay, tell us about it.
Sounds awesome.
Okay, I mean, how articulate, right? Yes, I love that Jude. And so what did you discover? Is air better in the country or in the town? In the town, okay, awesome. Well, thank you Jude for sharing that. You want to show your trophy to our board members? Okay, and our fourth through sixth grade champ is Cassid Castillo and lemon batteries. And I learned from that, collect pennies before 1980. Okay, awesome. Well, thank you for sharing that. Would you like to show your trophy as well? All right, seventh through twelfth grade champ was Caleb Lackey and his was Hail No, H A I L. You know, as much as hail as we've had around here, you could probably make some money off of that scientific project. Awesome. Well, thank you for sharing that. Caleb, would you like to share, show your trophy? And then Calvin Brulhart was our grand champion with methane digester. Do you want to talk about that? Wow, that's awesome. That's great. Wow. Okay, we'll show your trophy to our board members. I, I want to thank you guys for being wonderful Wildcats and just displaying all the things that a Portrait of a Wildcat displays, all those attributes. And critical thinking and communication and adaptability within your science fair projects, right? And integrity, all those things. So thank you. And thank you parents because without you, they would not be able to do their science fair projects without your support. I know it took some nights after the day, right? Late nights to do that. And we appreciate you guys as partners in education. So I have certificates here for you guys and it just says that we're proud of them for displaying communication competence and critical thinking at the 2025 Science Fair. So Jude. Caleb and Calvin. And then I also have stickers and pens for you guys as well. Okay. And you're just wrapping your hands. Love it. You're so welcome. You're welcome. Thank you guys.
I know you've got your hands full. We just wanted to shake your hand. I don't think there's any more hands left. Good job, Anne. Be sure and get you a cookie.
And then before you guys leave, make sure you get a cookie, okay? Or two. That's what you don't eat. Ms. Q is tempted to eat, so. The next group of people do their jobs so quietly behind the scene and they take care of us. They take care of the adults, they take care of the kids, they take care of staff members and they have been busy in the last month. We've had some tragedy within our district. And just today at the high school, we lost a staff member. And so they were there and not only just with their hearts and their smiles, but they brought in food and drinks for the staff. And they've been there all day. So tonight I'm honored to recognize our incredible behavior mental health team. They are the best in the state of New Mexico. Their compassion, dedication and expertise have made a powerful impact across our district, supporting students, guiding staff and strengthening our families. In recent months, our district has faced heartbreaking losses and significant hardships. And this team has gone above and beyond what is required of them. They have shown up with unwavering care, providing comfort, stability and strength when it was needed most. Their work is not only transforming lives, but also creating a culture of hope, healing and connection throughout our schools. We are deeply grateful for all that they do to help our Wildcats thrive in mind, heart and soul. And at this time, I would like for you guys to come up, please. And then I'm going to invite Mr. Hein and Mr. Mates to come up here to say a word. So come on up, please.
All right. So, you know, with everybody that I've ever worked with, you know, I'm not a big man of words and those kind of things, but. So what can I say about this group? It's hard, it's so difficult. It really truly is. And so what I did, I did, I guess the guy thing, just listen to what they do. And, and just kind of put a little spin on everything. So first of all, first and foremost, they were hired to do provide services for students with an IEP. However, they do more than that. Obviously, they do, these do work with our students on IEP as well as students that aren't on IEP. So I mean, as well as staff members. They triage students. Every single one of them has triaged a student at least once this year, I believe, about students for suicidal ideation. And they communicate with a phenomenal working with the student-based health clinic and making sure those kids, when they get sent over there, that it's not just because we're sending them. But it was truly something that we need to be, that child needs recently. They coordinate with the Livingston Food Coalition for the back snacks, all the district, all those, all those kids that get a back snacks because of these ladies here. And also during Thanksgiving, we give out families turkey dinner and they're all there along with the football team and whoever else they could scare up to, to be up there. They're there handing out food for Thanksgiving. Christmas time, they coordinate with the Lee County Electric and the Toy T. It's not, it's Mr. Dale, it's not T E A, it's T E E. I'm just kidding. And they coordinate and make sure all students have at least one Christmas present, those students that are in need. And they make sure all those kids get that. And sometimes, and they'll spend all day hanging out, handing out those gifts and plus deliver. They make sure, I know Araceli's not here, our homelessness, those kids, making sure if there's kids in need, we have Araceli to make sure those are coordinated, making sure those things are taken care of. And make sure our families are connected to outside services that we can't provide in the school system. They assist principals and staff to behavior issues. And we have Magali here, she's new, she's, she's been with us for, whoa, a week and a half now. And she's our registered behavior therapist and online right now in Honolulu, Hawaii is our PCBA that coordinates, it helps out with our behavior, students with behavior issues. That's who we, we hired this year and that's who's working with us on that. And these ladies were actually the first go-to in, up until the school year. So, and God bless them for that because a lot of it, kicking and scratching and everything else. Like Ms. Q said, they help our staff in tough times. And they've helped me out a lot this last six months. With everything my family's been going through. Sorry, during COVID and everything else, it's just been, these ladies have been great. They're our integral part of our crisis management team. And they have to put up with me every week. That's another thing you do. And they listen without judgment. They take students throughout the community in the area, Artesia, Hobbs, Lubbock, everywhere. They take them everywhere, exposing them to things that they never have that opportunity to do. And they work together to solve problems, if not every day, at least every two weeks when I meet with them and amongst each other. And like I said before, as Mrs. Q eloquently put, they care. They care about our students, our staff and everybody. So, Mr. Mates. I mean, you know, it saddens us that we need these positions in this school. It does. But if we're going to need it, we want the best and we're able to develop the green team, in our opinion. Really, all the credit goes to Roger and I for that hard work. They, they deserve all the credit and accolades. They've done an incredible job.
All right. So thank you guys. I have pens and thanks for you guys too as well.
Thank you ladies. Do you have any more, Ms. Q? That's it? Okay, we're going to, I know that there is football games and dance and all sorts of things that our kids are involved in. So we're going to say, please help yourself to a cookie and water. Thank you for being here. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. So, thank you everyone. We always want it right, so we'll get it fixed. Thank you guys. Be sure and get a cookie. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move right on into the director's reports and I will open it up to the board for any questions they may have.
I don't have any.
Yes. Did I say? No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I have on the maintenance and grounds, are we the whole deal with the parking lot over there? Is there any?
So we're communicating with the company right now and. So I have a call in to the county manager and so we'll start getting the ball rolling that way.
Other questions?
Yeah, I noticed there was something in here on this, on Jesse's report about delay on the demo.
So there's been managers switching with the PSFA. I think they're up to the fourth or fifth one. So every time they change leadership, then we have to resubmit all the paperwork. And so Mr. Van Hoosier added in his report the email that we received from Mr. Gurkin stating what's been going on. So we are fingers crossed that this is going to get started pretty quick.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
I have a quick question for Dr. Parker. On the workforce learning for the students, can you just expand a little bit on the difference between the paid and the unpaid? And I have it here if you.
You know, okay, so some of the jobs are through America's workforce, which used to be. Whatever that was. What, now I've forgotten the real name. Workforce Solutions, thank you. And so they, through the people that, like some of our jobs here in the district, they pay, they have money to pay those students, okay? Some of the businesses elect to pay the students. Some of them just have an internship type of experience because it's not through America's workforce. We used to have some funding last year through Innovation Zone where we had money to pay some students in maintenance or like the sports medicine students, we were able to pay them last year. We don't have that money this year. We may have some money coming to us through some donations that may be targeted for students like that. And so, yeah, it's, some of them do get paid, some of them do not.
So is it an age thing or just a case by case, whoever the, the business is, et cetera, if the funds are available?
And, you know, we have a certain number with America's job force and so those are the main source of funding right now unless a company wants to pay for the students.
Well, I just, I mean, I liked the report and I thought, well, I didn't really know how we determined the paid versus the unpaid.
You know, like if you want to be an optometrist, if that optometrist isn't going to pay you, then it would be just an internship that you'd have the opportunity unless they were willing to work with America's job force to then be funded through that, which they can. You have to go through some steps with them to get certified type of thing. So our goal is for them all to be paid, at least a little bit.
Little bit of something. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Okay, any other questions? If not, we'll move right into the superintendent's update.
I have several documents there for you. I was supposed to speak to the LFC a couple weeks ago. And so I put in my talking points there for the council brochure that, and then I want to, and then you will also see a Honeywell document stating that you see somebody back due to the.
Oh wait, there's a new cellular bond. I don't know what that.
Oh yes, and then of course my October tickets in there. And then that states the Department of Services for this is overcasted. And that information is located in.
Any questions for the superintendent?
I just think you did a great job at LFC. I thought you did a wonderful job. Good job. Somebody, our neighbor took a lot of time up and you did well getting that stuff in.
I will be going back up to Santa Fe on Monday. I was invited. There's 20 superintendents that were invited back up by the LFC to speak to them Monday afternoon. So I will be there in Santa Fe Monday afternoon.
So I think a lot of the information that was presented there was a surprise to some of the people on the LFC. And so hopefully some things will start moving again.
Yes, thank you.
Getting that information out there. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's move on into routine matters. We'll take items one through four as part of the consent agenda. Questions from the board? Do I hear any, a motion to approve items one through four is presented?
So move.
Okay. Next, budget adjustments. Did it come slower? Okay.
It's slow, it's like me.
Budget adjustments. Can I ask, is it, Stephanie, is that your, the, because that's for the mini grant or is that the TMS or is that, am I, is it wrong? I, I don't know who. And so I didn't know if it was Stephanie, Kelly, I, I wasn't really sure which way that went with the Hispanic Education Army.
So yes, so the teachers are allowed to apply for that one specifically for their need, any teacher, as long as it satisfies the requirements from the Hispanic Education Bureau. So Taylor Middle School had two applicants, one for cultural art during some of their lessons. So that would be Lupe Salsito and she was awarded the smaller amount of those two. And then Ruth Lopez will continue to use what she's awarded to supplement by like a quota.
Okay, well, thank you for taking that question from Tanya since she wasn't able to be here tonight. So thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, any other questions? Not do I hear a motion to approve the budget adjustments is presented?
A second.
Okay, thank you. There's no bids, donations from the science fair and also the grant that Lee County Electric puts out. And I think that was a really nice picture in the newspaper about that, so.
I just, I personally want to say kudos to all of the people in our community that donate to things like our science fair and our elementary schools. It truly takes a village and they've been good villagers. It truly takes a village, and they've been good villagers.
Yes, ma'am, and I do want to personally take this time to thank all of our science fair donors, um, as I printed out this, uh, donation page. I went back in today and looked and added four more donors, and so it's huge what they do for our, for our kiddos and the academics. And then Lee County Electric has been a great support for us, and, uh, we will have another school that has received a grant from them. That we will be, um, taking pictures, uh, this Friday, I believe, and that's Lee Elementary.
Oh, great.
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the donations is presented? All right, thank you. All right, moving on into old business, second reading to consider approval of update to policy G sixty-one hundred through ninety-four hundred with the exhibits. Comments and questions from the board?
There's a whole lot of red ink on some of that. Looks good.
I'm just, I'm gonna just compliment our district a little bit, when I look at that staff vacation. Um, I, I think we do a really good job of trying to not only pay our people well, but also a very, uh, generous vacation policy. And I know that all the people that that applies to work very hard, but I'm, I'm really excited that we can do that for our employees, so. I think that's a good thing, so I, I appreciate the board supporting that as it's moved through. Okay, if there's no other questions, do I hear a motion to approve the second reading on those named policies?
So moved.
Okay, we'll move right on into new business, first item is consider approval to reschedule the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-six board meeting.
Right, so the April board meeting falls, um, the same week that the National School Board Association conference is. And so I'm asking, uh, to move the date.
Do you have a recommendation?
Um, to, let's see, let me look at my, the fourteenth, to move it from April thirteenth.
Just one day off?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I like that, instead of going, a, a week later would put it really late for some of the stuff that I know always needs to be done.
Especially at that time of the year, there's a lot that comes before the board, graduation and all those things.
Okay. So we're moving it to Tuesday? April the fourteenth, but still at five o'clock? Moving it from April the thirteenth to April the fourteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so it should, yes, to, to, yeah, to reschedule.
Okay. Move it to the, okay, all right, yeah. All right, there's no objections, so I hear a motion to approve that change for the April board meeting from the thirteenth to the fourteenth. Okay, next item, first reading to review and revise policy I, sections zero zero five oh to thirty-three eighty-one. Oh, sorry, I forgot to, I got ahead of the game here, I apologize.
So you have, um, before you the, the corrections that we have already made, that are coming before you to approve or not approve. Um, I would like to move to strike all the four exhibits under, um, policy I twenty-six fifty. Because these exhibits are already addressed in the policy or the regulations of twenty-six fifty.
Can you, can you say that again, what is it you're wanting to do?
To strike the exhibits from, from six fifty, it's very redundant. And, yeah.
Okay. And I had just some notation, I don't know, has anybody else, I, I'm just, okay. Because I figure we all kind of saw, on, uh, I zero two hundred. It makes reference to parent-teacher conferences, and so I'm assuming that we need to.
Right, so we are getting that, um, checked with, um, Policy Services for their language of that. And so, um, we're waiting on Poly Services to get us updates. There's a couple of the policies in here that we're waiting on Policy Services, it's that one, I zero two hundred, and I twelve fifty.
Okay. Okay, so then, um, I twenty-four fifty. Which I believe is the one without pulling it up, oh, it, um. An advisory committee for the gifted and talented, do we still have that?
Mr. Hind, do we still have a advisory committee for the gifted and talented?
Yeah, all right, yes, I'll have to, I'll be honest with you.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll ask that question. I have to get invited to a meeting.
Okay. That's a great answer, because I was like, I, I didn't, and it just says that there needs to be one for however many high schools there are. So, one per high school, I mean, so. Shall create as many advisory committees as there are high schools, so I think we got one committee. So, anyway, I just, I had not heard anything about it, and I, this is the, the good part about us doing this kind of stuff, because. Okay.
And, uh, Ms. Maker, one of the things that the state is moving to, they're, they're wanting us to form all of these committees of all these things. And so, um, Ms. Stevens, as federal programs director, is trying to create a committee that encompasses all those things into one committee. So that we can have one meeting that represents all these entities that we're required to do.
I think that's.
And I believe that there will be, um, representation for the gifted and talented on that committee.
That, that makes so much more sense, it really does.
Right.
You can get committed to that.
And we want to be respectful of our parents' time.
Absolutely.
And staff members' time, instead of having them come to five different, uh, meetings, that they could come to one. And then receive all the information and be able to have input, uh, for all of those things, so. We're getting more and more requirements from the state to form these different committees, so we're trying to be creative.
I, I don't want our committee members to become overwhelmed by trying to take care of too many things either. So we may have to kind of keep an eye on that part, not to overwhelm them.
And another one I looked at, twenty-six sixty-two, it states that there's progress reports every two weeks, is that correct? Okay, we just need, and, and maybe, instead of putting a definite number, because that changes. Maybe having the word of, and I know we've done this before as far as like procedures, uh, you know, establish the timeline for regular progress reports or something. But then we're not, as that changes based on requirements that we receive from PED or administrative, you know, when they look at it and say, let's do it this way or this way.
And I believe we have another policy that states that we must have progress reports once a nine weeks, and so I need to find another policy.
And then it talked about family engagement trainings. And it, it went deep in that, so I love, it, what I'm hearing you say is this, looking at a committee would cover all of these things.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Feel like I'm really picking it apart, but twenty-six eighty-three, we list by name the advisory members for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year. Currently, there's only five of those people employed in the district, so I think we need to rephrase that.
I even saw my name on the list, I was like, wow, okay. Um, yes, so that is.
Oh, I forgot they work for the district, so, yeah.
So, that is one that is being crossed out, yes, ma'am, it should be in red.
Okay, okay, and I think, I think that was all I have.
Are the red lines or the other pieces in there?
Right, so. Right, that you have in your boardroom, that's the ones that we have struck out for your, um, for you to know, yeah. Or we're deleting them if they have all the red and strike out, so, yeah. And that twenty-six eighty-three is in that group, uh, to delete.
Okay. And finally, thirty-three eighty-one. The, uh, about fifth or sixth thing down, it makes a reference to the statewide cyber academy, is that still a thing?
Okay, but we will look into that.
Okay, okay, that was, that was all I noticed on that. And can I backtrack and ask Mr. Murad, or you, you may know what time the band marches tomorrow, do we know? Okay. The, the busman will know, there it is, the busman knows. Oh, they're the last one, for saving the best for last. In that, yeah. Right, right. Seven twenty-five is what we are, oh, yeah, and they. Do what? Okay, okay, thank you. I know, I was kind of excited because we don't have board meetings, so, okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, it is the first reading, so certainly board members can look back over it, if you have any questions, reach out to the superintendent on that. Okay, next item, public comment time, is there anybody here for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move right on in, do I hear a motion to move into executive session?
Yes.
Yes. All right, let's take a recess, thank you.